Hey y'all, I want to start out the video by saying thank you for watching them and learning hopefully and sticking with um the videos and awkward silences and stuff I have a car runs off. I have a stutter so when I'm talking at the camera the speech is not as smooth as it might be if I'm talking to people so online land maybe had the slight amount of weirdness compared to in-person land, but anyway, let's go on to our topic today. I'm sure you have asked yourself this question and I have received this question too many times to count. People come up to me on the street and they say, "Hey Robert, what is your favorite Supreme Court case?" I have an answer for that. Just like I'm sure every single person watching this video has an answer for that. That Supreme Court case would be West Virginia State Board of Education v. Barnett and not a sing-songy way, um, it's West Virginia State Board of Education v. Barnett. Quick side note, funny story, sometimes when I do weird voices or sing, I don't stutter as much, it's easier, uh, so that's sometimes strangely happens. Okay, anyway, so, West Virginia West Virginia State Board of Education v. Barnett. This is the first thing I want you all to wrap into your head, um, maybe nail it on the wall somewhere or sleep with it under your pillow. This court case may seem like it's about freedom of religion. However, it is not. This court case was decided on free speech grounds, not religious grounds. I'm sure every single person has read the court case so you know exactly why this is confusing. However, just in case you have not yet, that's key. It's confusing, it might seem like it's a free religion issue based upon the people involved in the court case, but it's a free speech issue. Alright, getting into it now. West Virginia State Board of Education v. Barnett was decided in 1943. If you are someone that has existed before, you know that during the 1940s, there was a World War II. America was fighting, um, the Axis Powers, Japan, Italy, and Germany. Um, so, here's the deal. It is about whether or not you can say the Pledge of Allegiance or you can force children to say the Pledge of Allegiance in school. In case you're wondering, the Pledge of Allegiance is in 1940. Is this, okay, everybody can see. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." If you, when you're reading the Supreme Court case, it talks about the pledge being recited with arm extended, palm facing upward, which later people said, "This seems a little too Nazi", so it was changed to hand over heart. Alright, so we're gonna be talking about the Pledge of Allegiance and if we can compel students to say it in school and if we do not, I'm sorry, if kids do not say the pledge, can we put some sort of punishment on them? During this time period, we were coming out of the Great Depression and into World War II and there were a couple of statutes like this enacted across the country, the legislative branch or the school boards that enacted these did so with the idea that we need to promote national unity, that we need to make people love America and have civic pride and togetherness and love and all that jazz. This argument also will come into play in the Supreme Court case. Okay, so, this court case surrounds, um, two Jehovah's Witnesses children, two Jehovah's Witnesses who also are in school. And Jehovah's Witnesses, Jehovah's Witnesses are, their religion forbids them to pledge allegiance to the flag. Uh, there are also holidays that, um, they don't celebrate Christmas, Easter, birthdays, things like, things like that because they want to make sure that all the glory and love and worship or and stuff goes to God, not to any earthly secular thing. Um, if you start pledging allegiance to the flag, you're then elevating the flag above God and that's not the greatest thing in the world according to them. They look at Exodus, Chapter 20, verse 4 and 5, as cited in the Supreme Court case, as sort of the biblical reasoning here. "Thou shall not make unto thee any graven image or any likeness of anything that is in heaven above or that is in the earth beneath or that is in the water under the earth. Thou shalt not bow down thyself to them or serve them." Don't humble yourself before anything other than God. Okay? The flag and pledging allegiance to it is a graven image. It violates the Jehovah's Witnesses' religion. They are, um, it would be, they would be in non-compliance with their religion if they were to say the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? Now, based upon this, you might think this is a religion issue, right? Remember I talked about that before? Well, it ends up being a free speech issue, not a religion issue. I bring this up again because despite how many times I bring it up, every time I talk about the case, about 50% of the students get it wrong, so I'm being slightly excessive here, okay? Free speech, not religion. The, um, punishment is rather, um, severe for not saying the pledge. So, West Virginia, you're required to say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you do not say the Pledge of Allegiance, the kids get expelled from school until they agree to say the Pledge of Allegiance. At the same time, on top of that, while the children are not at school, the parents are being, um, it's counted as if the parents are not sending their children to school. So, every child has the right to an education. You are required to send your child to school, you are required to educate your child. If you don't do it at school, you've got to do it at home school in some manner and there are different things you have to go through to make sure you're qualified and making sure the kids are learning what they're supposed to learn because it is a fundamental right of a human being and the building block of our democracy that we have the education that we need and so that's why we need to make sure education is done, yay, and stuff. Okay, but anyway, um, so, not only were the children expelled, but the parents were now not sending their children to school also. So, the parents would face fines and possibly jail time for, you know, more or less child neglect, not sending their kids to school, even though the school was not allowing them to come into it because they would not pledge allegiance. Big double whammy there, right? Okay, so Jehovah's Witnesses say "We can't do this because it's a violation of our religious beliefs." Supreme Court, here's the case to decide what's, if the law is constitutional or not. Now, something that's super interesting to me about this case is that this was decided in 1943. In 1940, a mere three years earlier, the Supreme Court heard what is essentially the same case. Uh, Minersville School Board v. Gobitz, that's how I've been pronouncing it. The Gobitzes are Jehovah's Witnesses, children, um, and everybody, uh, you know, on up to the family, but the uh, children would not say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag because of their religion, the you know, suit the government, it got it to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court decided that the law was constitutional. That the Minersville School District law requiring kids to say the Pledge of Allegiance, that it was constitutional. And their reasoning is cool or interesting or whatever. They say, one, it is a legitimate compelling state interest to promote unity, to promote a feeling of camaraderie in the nation, um, we can't have a democracy without, um, some general feeling of goodwill towards our citizens and such, so the legislature has a compelling interest in this area, the pledging allegiance to the flag works, you know, their Supreme Court goes, "I can see how the state legislature or in this case, sorry, the school district would go. A way to achieve this unity is through making kids say the Pledge of Allegiance," so that's cool with them. The Supreme Court also says that it doesn't want to start getting entangled in local school board issues because they don't want to be the school board of the country. Another interesting piece. Finally, the Supreme Court says this. Religious laws cannot trump government secular laws. We are not a religious nation. We are not a nation founded on a religion. Nobody's religious beliefs get to, um, sorry, nobody's religious beliefs get to become supreme to government law. Okay? Jehovah's Witnesses, fine, you say that violating the pledge or saying the Pledge of Allegiance violates your, your religion? Okay, tough. You, your religious beliefs? I don't care how deeply held they are, well, I'm sure they were very sympathetic, but basically, we live in a secular society, we expect everyone to follow the laws. If we start opening up religious exemptions, then it would be chaos, it would be anarchy, um, or could lead to that. Now, we're starting to favor some religions over others. We can't, like, this is not, never in the history of America have we established any sort of religious exemption to federal or state laws. This is not what the founders had in mind. We are a secular government, that is super clear, so, sorry. You have to say the Pledge of Allegiance. It was an eight to one ruling, almost unanimous, which makes, again, I think I've said interesting several times, the next court ruling, very interesting. So, we have a Supreme Court precedent that says that making kids say the Pledge of Allegiance is in fact constitutional. It's not a violation of anybody's religion and also, by the way, your religion does not get to supersede the law of the nation. West Virginia State Board does their law. The Barnetts take their case to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court in a shocking, an amazing turn of events, a historic turn of events, says that, you know, that Supreme Court ca, that case we decided a mere three years earlier? We were wrong. We're scrapping that precedent that we literally just did. Like, literally, like, again, I don't know why I'm pointing back here, like, in the Supreme Court time of three years is like yesterday. So, we're scrapping that and we're gonna decide six to three that it is unconstitutional to make children say the Pledge of Allegiance in school. You cannot force a child to say the pledge. The reason why they did that or the justification for it is pretty interesting. Starting off, we're gonna hit right at the confusion area. Yes, the case involves Jehovah's Witnesses and yes, it involves a religious belief that says they are not allowed according to religion to say the pledge. The Supreme Court says, "We're not deciding this on religious grounds," just over and over. "This is not about religion, this is not about religion, this is not about religion." If we were deciding this on the issue of establishment of a religion, then the Jehovah's Witnesses will lose. However, we're gonna see this now, this time, as a free speech issue. Children don't lose all of their rights to free speech when they go into school. There are certainly some that they lose, but they don't lose all their free speech rights and it would be unconstitutional to force, to compel a child to recite the Pledge of Allegiance if they don't feel compelled to do it. That's a type of expression, a type of thought, um, think of it. It's a free spe, it's free speech issue in expressing your patriotism. Whether it be from a free speech issue of burning a flag versus putting a flag on your, on a flagpole outside your house that's within uh, city code, let's say. Um, they, these are free speech issues. They're an expression of our political attitudes, our deeply held sort of our conscience. Here's a possible, possible analogy. You would not, you would find it unconstitutional for the government to force you and deliver a speech before people on, or in favor of a candidate that you do not support. You love Ted Cruz, the government comes in and says, "Hey, here's a speech talking about how much you really love Hillary Clinton." Wouldn't go for it, would you? That'd be a clear violation of your free speech. Flag, pledge, same thing. Alright, so it's free speech issue, not a free religion issue. Recording over time, recording over time. In an effort to be as repetitive as possible, Gobitz, the Supreme Court ruled in Gobitz in 1940 that the Jehovah's Witnesses had to say the Pledge of Allegiance and that their religious beliefs could not trump government law. Okay? In 1943, the Supreme Court reversed itself and said that schools could not compel children to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Both cases involved Jehovah's Witnesses and both cases involved the action the school was forcing children to do would violate religious beliefs, okay? The court though reaffirmed and said over and over and over again, "We're reversing our decision, however, this is not about religion, this is not about religion, this is not about religion, this is a free speech issue, this is a free speech issue." If we're deciding this on religious grounds, Jehovah's Witnesses would lose. So, we're not reversing ourself in Gobitz on that area, but now we're saying that actually the pledge falls under a a free speech issue in the First Amendment. There are a number of awesome things also in this court case and this is why I really like it. The court gets kind of philosophical and it's pretty neat and it's kind of like, kind of, I find it to be kind of uplifting, maybe like, hooray, America! Kind of feeling. Okay, so, a couple of things the court looks at, again. To justify its opinion, we're gonna get some philosophical on America and people and their beliefs and all that. The court says in Gobitz, "We wrestled with the question that Abraham Lincoln posed, which is, 'Must a government of necessity be too strong for the liberties of its people or too weak to maintain its own existence?' The court in Gobitz was like, "We need to make sure the government exists, you know, this is a dilemma that's plagued America for a long time, how far do we let liberty go? Even if it risks national unity and pride and all that jazz." Lincoln wrestled it with this during the Civil War and of course, he tossed out a bit of the Constitution in an effort to win that war, um, or what he thought would be needed to win the Civil War. So, we're looking at, is this an issue where we, the government must be too strong and it violates some civilians' liberties, but it's, you know, strong, so we keep it together? Or is this an issue where we might decide that the government should be weaker even though it might threaten its, it to exist? The Supreme Court in this case though comes back and says, "You know what? Abe Lincoln was wrong. He's so wrong on this issue. This is a false dichotomy. This is an oversimplification of the way we look at our laws. It is not an issue of, "Will our government be strong enough to survive? We need to make sure we violate some civil liberties so that we survive." Or an issue of, "What if we, if we don't violate civil liberties, then the nation will crumble and will die and stuff." The court says, "No." As a matter of fact, it is from the Bill of Rights that this nation gets its strength. It is from our diversity that the nation gets its strength. Our liberties are what give this nation, nation, strength. We don't need to worry about liberties getting in the way of making sure our nation is strong because they are what makes our nation strong. The Bill of Rights is the source of our national unity, our strength. And that we find throughout history, when a government tries to enforce unity on its people, bad things happen. The government crumbles. You don't have super great ideas emerging from that society. It doesn't advance and adapt and change. The fact that we have guaranteed liberty to all people is what keeps us humming along. Okay. The Bill of Rights also. The argument was made in Gobitz that the pledge rule forcing kids to say the Pledge of Allegiance was decided on legislative grounds and if the people did not like it, they could overturn themselves on legislative grounds. There was an avenue there for the people to overturn a law that, that they might have felt was unjust. Therefore, the Supreme Court had no business getting involved because the people had an avenue to reverse the decision if they didn't like it and they didn't want to get in the way of the legislative bodies sort of authority and responsibility. Barnett, the Supreme Court case, Barnett comes around and says, "No, that reasoning that we did three years ago was wrong. We forgot that the whole reason we have a Bill of Rights is to take certain things off of the legislative agenda. There are some rights that Americans have that cannot be legislated away. They are never up for utilitarian discussion. The courts are here to make sure that the majority cannot enforce laws that violate the rights of the minority. Even though you could overturn that law via legislative means, it doesn't matter. We don't pass laws that violate the Bill of Rights." Says, "The very purpose of the Bill of Rights was to withdraw certain subjects from the political controversy, to place them above, sorry, to place them beyond the reach of the major, of the majorities and officials and to establish them as legal principles to be applied by the courts." Pretty cool. Philosophical stuff there. Yay, America. The court then asks also, "Where do patriots come from? How does America maintain its patriotic attitudes?" We want to make sure that we have people grow up and love America and keep our national cohesion together and stuff. This was the goal of that legislation. To make sure that kids grew up understanding that America was totally awesome. The court says though, in this case, "The legislature is wrong. This is wrong. Patriotism cannot come from the forced recitation of a pledge, but it has to be something voluntary and spontaneous within you that makes you love this country." The court says that the fact that the legislature thinks that we have to force children to say the Pledge of Allegiance in order for them to be patriots later, later on in life speaks very low of America. It suggests that the legislatures do not think American institutions are good or strong or wonderful enough for people to come to believe that they are the just, they are just and the best institution. Or wonderful enough for people to come to believe that they are the just, they are just and the best institutions. In the world. The deal is here that our country is strong on its own merits. Our country can prove to its citizens and the rest of the world through its principles, through its virtue. That it is worthy of patriotism, worthy of love, worthy of respect. You cannot force other people to have that respect for the country. And I think that's the point of the Supreme Court case, and you can tell, other reason why I love it, it's. A hooray sort of opinion, it's very inspiring, and it says like. Our country is great because people want to be a part of it. It's great because of its diversity, its unity comes from its difference. That makes sense. It is the fact that we allow and that we encourage difference, that we. Accept different beliefs. Different ideas, people from different backgrounds, cultures, religions, beliefs. That our nation is strong and our nation is unified. When we try and force that unity onto us, when the government tries to force that unity onto its people. And force a set of ideals on its people, it starts to tear the people apart. We saw this with the aftermath of the Supreme Court case Gobitz. Uh in nineteen forty, the state passed its. Um or sorry, the Minersville School District passed its, you have to say, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag bill. Jehovah's Witnesses said, no, we can't do that. The Supreme Court said, listen, this court, the state has a legitimate interest in promoting unity and patriotism. And they've decided that a way to promote unity and patriotism is to force. Kids to say the Pledge of Allegiance. All of a sudden, the state defined with the court's backing. That Jehovah's Witnesses were attempting to undermine our country. That they were looking to sow discord amongst its people, and that they were very unpatriotic. Think about it, if you passed a. A law saying that in order to make sure every, you know, our country stays strong. Our people need to say the pledge, and then you have people coming along and saying, I'm not gonna say the pledge. They must be trying to make the country weak. The court said, this is what that law is for. Does school board pass that, you know, ordinance, that rule saying kids had to say the pledge? And that we're doing it because, yay, America. After that happened, you had a strong uptick in violence against Jehovah's Witnesses because they were Jehovah's Witnesses. People would stop them on the town square, um say, hey, say the pledge right now, and then when they didn't, they would get beat up. People went out of their way to attack Jehovah's Witnesses. And this is what happens whenever we see any minority group in this country throughout history somehow targeted. Made either politicians or government through. Speech or through law suggests that a certain group of people are maybe different. Or out to undermine America, that's when you start to see America tear itself apart. That's when you start to see the violence. Of whoever the state determines the in-crowd is against the out-crowd. In that case, after nineteen forty, it was Jehovah's Witnesses, one of the many out groups. So. West Virginia State Board of Education, B Barnett, I think it's got a good uplifting message. It's why I love America because of its diversity, and from its diversity comes its unity. And that's what's given us our strength, anyway. That's that, have a good day, I hope this helps.